Okay, thank you. It's now six forty-five and we're in the open session in accordance with Governor Baker of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order to suspend certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law thirty-eight, chapter twenty, the open meeting session portion of this meeting will be held remotely and in an online conference mode hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel twelve and it can also be viewed via live stream at WHCA TV and will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. So at that point, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. As customary, maybe we reserve a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve bill and payroll law.
So moved in, Kyle.
You have a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, Ron called Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian? Brian? You're muted. Yes, you're muted. I'm reading his mouth. He's saying yes, and I vote yes. I need a motion to accept the correspondence in the read file. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, so moved in.
Thank you, Kyle. Second? Second. Okay, who's second? Justin. Okay, any discussion? Okay, no discussion in favor, Kyle?
Ah, yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian? Brian? He speaks and I vote yes. Okay, approval minimum, approval of meeting minutes for open session twelve, nine, twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Saying none, Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Brian? And I'll say yes.
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the minutes in the read file for twelve fifteen, two thousand and twenty. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, so moved on those minutes.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, go and move into new business, discuss reserve fund transfer for the Board of Selectmen's recording secretary. There's a situation we're in. They denied it while they they wanted to hear a little bit more information on on what it why they needed, why we need a reserve fund transfer. I sent Rick Anderson a note stating to the fact that we have met since the beginning of the fiscal year forty-five times already. One of those times were like a six-hour session. Normally, we meet twice a month. So you're talking about twenty-four, you know, we have what, seven months so far of the year that was out of the fiscal year. So it's like fourteen, fourteen meetings, but we've had forty-five. That's the main reason that we're out of monies for our recording secretary. I explained that to Rick Anderson. He felt comfortable with it, but they still have some questions. So at seven o'clock, I am going to go to their FinCon meeting since I was the one that signed the reserve fund transfer and explain to them why we need that extra money. And I I was, I made the assumption that when Rick, when Rick and I met, he said that he had no problem with it, but apparently there was. So now they want to see see me and and maybe Lisa at their meeting if they have any questions. And what I will do is I will ask them the vote on that so that when we re- resume, reassume our meeting, I can let you know what the results are.
Dan, if I could just, um, yeah, if I could just explain a little bit. So when I returned from vacation, I was told that I needed to quarantine, which I did. I had my work laptop at home and work from home. When the, when the reserve item came to my attention, Lori had sent me an email with the description of what needed to be done. I went ahead and filled out the form on my laptop that showed the date, the amount, I put my name in, and unfortunately, the area where for the explanation couldn't be filled out on the laptop. So I filled out what I could and I emailed it to Ricky Anderson. The copy that I have in my sandbox shows the date, the amount, and my name on it. However, for some reason, when it got to either Rick or Lori, it removed some of that information. So the Finance Committee was questioning why there was no amount on it, why it wasn't signed. And it was explained because the form couldn't be filled out on the laptop that I had. And for some reason, it was removing information. I, I, Lori wrote it in and put it in the mailbox, Dan signed it and resubmitted it. And to my knowledge, I didn't, I wasn't aware that my presence was required at that Finance Committee meeting. It seemed pretty self-explanatory. So I also, I did show Rick today the email that I sent that showed the information filled out so he could see it for his own eyes that I did have all that information in there. So there shouldn't be a question that it was sent to them unfilled out. It just, for some reason, went from my computer to Rick's email and removed the information.
And also, I guess when they voted on the minutes on the reserve fund transfer, I had met with Rick that day and asked him, does one of us have to attend? He says, no, he said, it's it's clear. It's clear. I don't see an issue. But now, but he was surprised that there was an issue. So we'll continue tonight and I'll be there to answer any of their questions. Does anybody have any comments or concerns?
Yeah, I did send, based upon our request from Rick, Rich, in the email he sent to us. He asked if any of us had any objections to the, to adding money to that, to that line. And I responded to him and said, I have no objections whatsoever because everything was to me, clear and self-explanatory. So at least he got, he got that feedback. Also, Dan, while you're there, you, there was a question about whether they wish to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen late in January or early in February. If you could let them know that we think it would be better to put that off until the the Newtown Administrator has been here for more than a day before we have that meeting. So if you can just let them know that we'll schedule a, we'll schedule a joint meeting with them, it'll probably be later on.
Yeah, I'll explain to them the fact that, you know, as you said, he needs to be brought up in some issues and what needs to get done in the process at the time at our town. That way, you know, you'll be able to answer any questions that the Finance Committee may have. So, um, and just to let you know, I'm not in the past when we've had reserve fund transfers from the, from the Board of Selectmen, which basically the only time we have it is if we need some more money in the secretary's account. Frank has usually put it together and just presented it and then he's like left our meeting and went over there to explain it to him while we were in session when we were meeting in Town Hall. So we've never really voted on them in the past. At least I cannot remember in the last twenty years as voting on reserve fund transfers that we need. So I think it'd probably be a poor policy to start acting, you know, acting on that. I mean, maybe in the, in the future, the Newtown Administrator could let us know saying, look, and I'm going to need a reserve fund transfer. I'll be doing it. But I don't think this is something we need to vote on. This is just business at Town Hall in the Town Administrator's office, as usual, I would think. Anybody have any comments on that?
No, I think.
I don't want to start a practice that we've never done and don't want to start, you know.
Right. Sounds good to me, Dan.
Yeah.
Luck, good luck explaining it to them.
I mean, I'll explain, I'll just explain what it is. I mean, it is what it is. We've had forty-five meetings. I mean, you know, three times, and we're not even done yet with this year. And to tell you the truth, I don't know how much is in that line. If Lori is taking notes right now and there is nothing in that line for her, I do not know at this time. Because it's been put off. So I'm certainly sure if it is, we'll have to back pay. All right. So I guess what I'm going to do is I got a couple of minutes. If anybody has anything they want to discuss on the reserve fund transfer? We all comfortable with it? The way I'm, I'm going to go there?
Sounds good.
At least, did you get it? Did you get the, the link?
I have it, yes.
Good, okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a motion to recess for a period of time. And when I'm finally done, I will come back onto this link and when I appear, Eric can bring me up, get the town meeting, get our business started and we'll continue with our meeting. So hopefully it won't take that long for the Finance Committee and I just to explain things and get an answer from them. So at this point, I guess what I'm going to ask for is a motion to recess for a short period of time. I don't know exactly how long it will take. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, so moved in.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hopefully none. Okay, Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Right, Brian?
I heard, I heard him say yes.
Did he say yes? Okay.
Bit of a tape delay there.
Himself. Yeah. And Randy?
Yes.
And Justin?
Yes.
And I say yes. All right. So Lisa and I, I'm going to mute myself and I'm going to go on to their link and see if they're open yet. All right, I'll see you when I get back. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're back into our regular session and just to update you. The motion was unanimous. They approved the reserve fund transfer. And I thank them very much. And Kyle, I did make a notation that we, we, we want to wait till our Newtown Administrator gets his feet wet, I would say, until we have a joint meeting with them and that when we're ready, he will be contacting them for a joint meeting to discuss the budget. And they, and they thought that was appropriate.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is Town, Town Administrator's report. Lisa, are you back yet? Oh, there you are. I mute yourself.
Sorry about that. So for our update with our COVID numbers, we currently have a hundred and forty-eight cases. They're not all new cases. Some of them, they're in various stages of quarantine and isolation. We, I have not had any reports of any cluster COVID cases, nor any further cases within any of our town departments. So that's, that's a good thing.
Thank you. Okay, dealing with that, we're going to go to new business, discuss COVID protocol for the town departments. Did all receive that email with the two copies of the possible updates from our lawyer? He had a clean copy and then another, another copy. And I guess Tim Hanlon, Chief of Police, had a couple of questions. And.
Dan, Peter is, is with us as well.
Oh, good. All right, let's go. Peter, you there?
Yes, I am.
There you go. Hi, Peter.
Hi, how are you? I was able to answer Chief Hanlon's questions, I think, in satisfaction.
Did everybody on the board read the, the two options? Now, Peter, is, you say one's a clean copy and one's? How did you put it?
So, yeah, if we can discuss the clean copy, I don't think that the board needs to discuss and question the marked copy.
Yeah. I looked at the two, the two files that you gave us. They look exactly the same to me.
One, yeah, one, one has some, some comments to to the board that that may be privileged. So in terms of in terms of what we should discuss in an open session, I think using the the clean copy would be appropriate.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, when did that?
Yes.
That go out? I'm just trying to pull it up now.
Say it again. Oh, you haven't got, you didn't get it?
I, I probably did. I'm just not finding it now to follow along. Do you know when that email was sent?
About three fifty this afternoon, Justin.
Don't.
Was it just the?
Oh, hold on.
Oh, it's just the Lisa and I? Did everybody get it?
I sent it to, I'm sorry, I sent it to Dan and Lisa. I will, I can circulate it to the full board. You all in front of your computer? I guess you are. You're on Zoom. One second.
Now, is this something that we need to vote on tonight or did the board feel as though they would want some time to possibly review it and then discuss it at our next meeting? I don't know what the pleasure of the board is.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, the, the the pile, the policy is really a compiled policy. You had several different policies. One was a travel policy.
Peter, can I, can I stop you for a second? Did you send this back out? I, I haven't gotten anything.
I'm sending it now. So, yeah, you can, you can consider it later if you want, but the, the policy is really compiled. Set, you had several different COVID policies, addressing travel, addressing workplace procedures. And this was an attempt to compile everything into one policy, along with some updates based on based upon recent COVID guidance from the state DPH requirements, as well as review from your emergency personnel and your health personnel in town. So there's some clarifying language and a lot of existing language remains.
Right, you should have gotten it now. I just received the second copy.
Stephen, too.
Everyone get it?
Yeah, we just, I just received the clean, what's called a clean copy.
Yeah. Randy, have you seen it yet? Have you got it yet?
Yeah, I'm reading it down.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Dan, if the plan is, you know, if you're asking if we want to review this or 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 vote it, nothing in here, at least reading through it now, seems earth-shattering or that different from what we're already doing. It's just kind of codified and written down. I think, given that we haven't scheduled our next meeting yet, it's probably prudent to vote this and get it in the hands of our employees.
Yes, and I believe that we need probably a motion to vote the existing one out in this one end? Do we have an existing policy that we need to vote out?
You do. So while you're looking at it, there, there are a couple of things that I, I do want to point out to you. One is an issue of leave in terms of workplace exposure. I do think that this is something that the board needs to consider whether or not they, you know, how they want to address this policy. But the policy provides, as drafted, that in the event of a workplace exposure, employees who are, who are close contacts and are required to quarantine will either be asked to work remotely at the direction of their department head or be entitled to paid time off. Apply against their sick time or vacation times. It would be additional time off that the writing to an employee only in the event of a workplace exposure, they were at close contact.
And this is whether they test positive or not, just if they're in contact. We'll say if somebody's in an office and they, they test positive, they call in sick or they test positive, and someone worked with them the day before, that they need to quarantine themselves?
Yeah, so this is for the idea here is that this is for the quarantine period that's imposed for a close contact by the Department of Public Health. If someone were to test positive, they would be sick and they would be entitled to their sick leave for as long as they were sick. So I think there is a difference between an employee who's quarantining, I, I, under public health guidances, as I understand it, between an employee who's quarantining because they're a close contact versus someone who is actually sick in terms of how the board wants to offer that, it's really up to you. You know, do you, do you want to extend it to employees who are sick? Or limit it to that group of employees who may not otherwise have time off that they can use?
How's the board feel?
The way you have this written, Peter, is basically how we had discussed it in the meeting correctly, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, I did meet last week with Randy, Lisa, Chief Grenow, Chief Hanlon. The names are escaping me, but two folks from your, your public health nurse and your.
Dan, yep.
And what was the police chief, Chief Hanlon, where his concerns were about his employees, about his the way they're classified as emergency employees?
So on, on number nine, it says this policy shall not be deemed to limit the emergency authority of any public safety or public health officials. I, I don't think that you could do that in the first place if they have statutory authority, but, but but this is just a note that as, as Chief Hanlon, Chief Grenow noted, if they have employees who are close contacts but not exhibiting symptoms, they, and they have an emergency call where they need additional personnel, they can call them in to address whatever the emergency is. And, and what they expressed is their hope is that they never have to do that. But they do have the right under their emergency powers. And in terms of his, Chief Hanlon's other question, the question was regarding when an employee returns to work after testing positive, as set forth in, in four, I believe that would be at the discretion of the Board of Health and the Department of Public Health in terms of when they're released from quarantine.
Hey, Brian, we just, we just lost you, Brian?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do, Dan. We received, all of the selectmen received an email this morning from a Joanne Wing. Was the union steward for the OPEIU Local Six. And she knew we were going to be discussing COVID protocols this evening. And she had some questions. I don't know if Peter, if, if, did you send a copy of this to Peter?
Yeah, I didn't get it.
Yeah, you, you, you did. It went to all the selectmen. At least that's what, that's what it says.
Dana, it regarded FFCRA Cares Act, the, the additional two weeks of paid sick time to be used only for COVID exposures or symptoms.
I don't know if I'll wait to my.
I'd like, I'd like to have her think that we've considered what, what she wrote.
Can you read what she asked? Because I don't see it here. I either.
Dan, if I could, I, I did send it and I did send that for that email to Michelle and Peter this morning.
Yeah, that way I can put her question is.
Okay, could you answer it for us, Peter?
Yeah, let me, I'm just trying to, rather than reading the whole thing, try to cut to the chase. So Joanne Wing, she identified herself as the union steward for OPEIU Local Six and indicated that she had reached out to several towns about what time off employees need to take if affected by workplace exposures. She noted that several towns are extending FFCRA leave for all employees to take time off if they're directly affected or tested.
Oh, I got it.
For COVID nineteen. She noted that in Rainham, the Board of Selectmen voted to give paid administrative leave if employees have to quarantine. And in Rockland, the they're extending time off for COVID nineteen that will be courted as CBD on time sheets up to eighty hours after that sick time or PTO will be used. Does not include quarantine time mandated for travel. Most towns agree that vacation will be used for this. A couple are allowing the use of sick time for this. So I think that the board's policy as written does address her concerns because it extends paid time off to employees who are exposed in the workplace.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Yes, Justin?
And I would just add.
I did get it. I finally found it.
Okay, good. The, so without going into FFCRA related stuff, if an employee were to run out of sick time and need to quarantine, the board could take it under consideration and extend sick time to that employee on a, on a case-by-case basis. But I think, and that, that would only be if someone themselves was sick and had to stay home. If you've got a workplace exposure and have to quarantine, it's administrative leave.
Yeah.
That's at least how I understand the, the policy where.
Our protocols cover what the question she was asking? According to Peter, anyway.
Seems that it might.
Okay. I think it does.
So I, I would move that we adopt the protocols that were sent by Peter today, the clean copy.
Second.
A second. Um, do I, okay, but all right. Um, any discussion? All right, Peter, before we do that, do we need to motion to suspend any past protocol? We can do it after we motion this in?
You can. Michelle has something to say.
Yeah. All right, Michelle.
Say something, Michelle.
Good evening. Peter's doing a fine job and I don't want to interrupt, but you're kind of in a parliamentary rule.
Right, there you go.
But you can't enact a policy until you rescind the prior policy unless you amend the motion to have these new policies
replace.
Like the existing policy. And then you could do it in one motion, but you'd have to withdraw the second, withdraw the motion and do a new motion.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Oh, withdraw my second.
All right, and so I'd like to make the new motion.
That we replace our current protocols with the, the ones that were delivered to us today. Does that make sense?
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Michelle, thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Just to strongly encourage employees, if you feel sick, stay home. Don't, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that being said, all right, Justin?
Yes.
Um, yes, Brian?
For obvious reasons, I shall abstain.
Okay, um, Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Next on the new business on the agenda is act on the resignation of Assistant Town Administrator and current interim Town Administrator, Lisa Green, effective February fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Lisa, would you like to speak on this? Is this about you?
Well, I, you know, just want to say that it's become apparent to me that there's no growth opportunity for me here in this town. The town has determined, has decided to go in a different direction and I've determined it's time for me to go in a different direction as well. I, I do thank the residents for giving me the honor of representing them these four years. It's, it's been a, it's been a trip and I've enjoyed every minute, minute of it.
And thank you very much, Lisa. Um, so your letter of resignation says that you'll be resigning on the fifth? And thank you very much, Lisa. Um, so your letter of resignation says that you'll be resigning on the 5th? And on New Town Administration, that's a Friday, and our new town administrator will be coming in, uh, that following Monday. Okay, does anybody have any questions before we take a vote on accepting it? Yes, Brian?
Uh, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you, Lisa. Personally, we've had a good relationship, working relationship and, and I thought that we had a lot of good work done while you were here, both as a selectman and as the Assistant Town Administrator and Interim Town Administrator. And I just, I know that you're going to go places and do good things. So, personally, I thank you and I, I'm sure there's many citizens out there that want to thank you as well. So we wish you well.
Thank you.
And same here. Uh, so I would like to, uh, motion, my feeling of regret that she is leaving, but that's her choice. She wanted to, uh, she wants to further her career and that's up to her, the way she does it. So, that being said, dare I hear a motion to accept the resignation of Assistant Town Administrator and current interim Town Administrator Lisa Green, effective February 5th, 2021?
I'll make that motion down.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Nobody wants to say it. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, next is set February's, uh, agenda. I said February's, uh, meeting agenda, yeah, when we want to meet. Let's see. Ninth and 23rd? That works. That, that works for me. That work for everybody?
That works. The 23rd might be a good date to reach out to the FinCom as well if they want to do their joint meeting.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll see if, uh, yeah, it's late enough so that our new town administrator, Lincoln, could possibly get his feet wet and maybe, uh, we'd like to, uh, discuss whether that works or good. So we're looking at the ninth and the 23rd. Uh, old business, act on the update of COVID-19 travel policy. Did, is that part of the new policy that we put in? There's not?
It is, it's the last page.
Huh?
The, uh, last page of the new policy was the.
Right, so we don't need, that we can pass over that? Okay. Uh, act on Charlene Conway's request to reduce license fees. This was discussed, I believe, on a meeting on the, a couple of, a couple of meetings ago. And at that time when we discussed it, we asked Lisa if she could, uh, look at other towns and what they're doing and it was, uh, moved by Justin and second, uh, by whoever and voted on to, uh, table this until we can come up with those, um, those answers. And Lisa gave it to us and there's a few towns that has either reduced it or lowered it or cut it completely. But, um, my personal feelings is that, uh, if we start this, do we open up something that we really don't want to for other businesses? Cause I know that a lot of businesses receive monies from the federal government to, uh, pay their employees. So there's no loss of pay there. And it would be my feeling that, uh, we leave it as it is, because if we reduce theirs, then where do we, then where does it, where does it start? Where do we go? So that's my feeling. I don't know if anybody else has any feelings on the issue.
Yeah, I, and, um, is there any information about what, uh, if, whether or not the Carousel Center received any of the federal money?
I don't know. Lisa, do you know?
I, I believe I remember hearing that they did receive some money from the federal government.
I think I might be in favor of actually passing this over once again. I, the, the, um, the material that Lisa received is, is good information, but it's, it's, it's hard for me to decide from that information, um, whether we ought to do anything. I'd like to know more about the PP money that, that, uh, the Carousel received. And I, I think what I'd do is move to pass it over and, uh, we can talk about it the next time we meet on, uh, in February, when the, the new town administrator is here.
I would second that.
Okay, that would only do the new town administrator one day to work on it?
No, he can start working on it. He can start working on it the day before and the day after, or we can put it off until the end of the, end of February. I don't know at the time. I'm not, I would like to know, I, I think, what kind of relief she's received already.
Okay. So it's been motioned in second. Anybody else have any thoughts on it? Seeing none? Get on the line, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
I guess I'll vote yes, make it complete. So we'll wait till, uh, our next meeting. If not, we don't have the information on the ninth. We'll put it on the agenda for a little bit later, that next meeting after that's 23rd, that way we'll know.
Okay, good.
Okay, um, next, in the old business strategic plan. Lisa?
Yes, so, um, the last time we had Ann Donner, who presented, um, her thoughts and ideas for a strategic plan. She did provide us with a, a quote and a proposal for the fee for completing the strategic plan, which I forwarded to everybody, I believe. Just need the board to vote, um, to sign the agreement and send it to her and then she will be on board to work on the strategic plan for the town of Whitman.
Uh, let me see, Dan. Uh, do I, well, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I, I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble finding the quote. Uh, do you know when you sent that out, Lisa?
Uh, yeah, hold on.
This, is it in the agenda?
No, it's not in tonight's package.
Okay.
I don't think, unless I missed it.
I don't see it there either.
I think all of us are really impressed by her. I would love to get it, uh, right away this evening, but I don't see the, I don't see the quote.
So I sent it on, uh, 12/1 at 5:49. See. Apologize if it didn't make it into the packet for today.
This is prior to her, her meeting with us.
Oh, prior.
Okay.
We've actually seen it already?
Yeah, it was part of the, the packet.
My, my mistake then. Someone, tell me what it was.
When did you send it, Lisa?
Well, I, I sent one on 12/1, but she did send another one and I, I apologize, I'm having trouble finding it.
I have it.
Okay, hold on, I, I have it here. I'm sorry, on the, on 12/14. All right, I just forwarded it again. I apologize if it didn't come through.
I got it. I found it, yeah.
Yep.
It's the quote right on. Here it comes in again. Yep.
So the information she provided mainly, um, lays out the, her plan for completing the, gathering the information, the data, and then completing the strategic plan.
Right, by, by mid, by mid-March, it looks like, is that?
Yeah.
Reading this correctly? That's pretty, that's actually pretty good. Has anyone, has everyone had a chance to go over this with enough attention to be able to vote on it?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that it doesn't, um, exceed the
Net 15.
Appropriation, yeah.
Nope.
Right, I don't think it does.
It, it does not. So that was, that was my biggest concern.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to move that we, um, offer her that contract and accept a proposal.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Anything? Oh, seeing none. Uh, Kyle?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Uh, Randy? And I'll vote yes. Okay, that ends our open session. Um, I need a motion to, let me get to where I want to be. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn and to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect, it may have, uh, on the litigating position of the public body. The chair so declares we're dealing with the Fire Union Local 1769, OPIU Local Six, uh, strategies and litigation. Uh, and in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 38, Section 20, the executive session portion of this meeting will be held in an online conference mode. Hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be, uh, physically, be able to physically attend. No broadcast of executive session will be made. And I would like everyone to say, yes, they are in a room by themselves. There's nobody with them. And they're comfortable with that. So may I get a motion, please?
Uh, so moved.
Yeah, here's a second to go into Zach. Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Kyle?
Uh, yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So just give us a minute so we can log off this. We're going to stay right here, right?